I'd like to call the March 11th Zoning Commission meeting to order. Let the record show, all members are present except Sherri Slimon. Public comment period. Anyone in the audience wishing to come forward and discuss any item not on the agenda, please come forward and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to speak?
Deciding to include commissioners?
No. Only public. Acceptance of minutes from the February 11th, 2009 meeting. I think we have some amended minutes, if I'm correct.
Motion, motion to accept the revised minutes.
Second.
All right, motion by Michael Marshawn, seconded by Paige Becknow to accept the amended minutes. Any opposition? Motion carries. Public hearing to consider the following, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Mr. Julio Dumas to kind of go through items A through C. Mr. Dumas?
If I would please, I'd like to ask for a motion to amend the agenda as follows. Two items to amend on the agenda. One is that I did notice until we got here that staff failed to put the zoning subcommittee report on the agenda, so I would like to add that as item 5D to the agenda. And number two, the other portion of the amendment to the agenda is item number 5C. All of the public workshops are scheduled, they're on the webpage, they've been notified and advertised, they're all going to occur during the month of March, and I would respectfully ask that item number 5C be deferred until the April meeting.
All right, do we have a motion to amend?
That is a motion.
Oh, that is a motion. I thought you were asking for a motion.
I'm making a motion.
I didn't know you could, no. Motion by Julio Dumas to amend the agenda for deferring item C for a month to allow all the workshops to take place, and then also to add an item D to add the zoning subcommittee meeting.
Second.
Second, I think you already seconded, I think Bob already seconded it, and so a motion and second. Any opposition? Motion carries. All right, now, Mr. Dumas may start with A.
The first item, five item, cost connections of commercial parcels. You know, as we listened in the prior hearing, the concept here is to provide for a mechanism to require commercial developments to have their parking lots interconnect to alleviate the traffic onto the thoroughfares that they front on. You know, not to pick on any particular part or geography of Ascension Parish, but if you look at Highway 73 on the south side of Interstate 10, you have those various numbers of commercial parcels, and those parking lots do not interconnect, and in order to go from one to the other, you end up having to go out onto the major thoroughfare which adversely affects the flow of traffic. And we thought that this would be a benefit to the parish as a whole, and a preponderance of public safety and welfare.
Any questions on this? I think I will add, I know the DOTD is very much in favor of this. It allows them to do less permitting and address drainage and all that stuff. The fewer driveway entrances, exits is mostly encouraged by them and strongly supported.
I guess I understand what's trying to be done here, but I think depending upon the type of business, for instance, say, an automobile dealership, if it's next to another piece of property, and they've got all these new vehicles parked on there, and all of a sudden it's going to become a thoroughfare for people, and if I'm a fingernail business, for an example, and next thing you know, somebody next to me builds another type of business, and all this traffic starts coming across my parking lot and starts destroying my parking lot, who's going to pay for it? You know, it's back on me as the homeowner. So I understand the movement of the traffic, but I guess who's going to police this, or is it just something that as a business owner, you're going to have to accept? Or has any of that been taken into consideration?
Well, let me respond to one example real quick. Automobile dealerships, you know, generally you have the display area, the storage area, the car, and you have public parking area, right? So the only part of the parking lot that we would want to interconnect, it would be that public parking area. That would be the only portion of the parking lot of a business like that, because the rest of it would be considered, quote, "display area" or "storage area," per se. It's not necessarily public parking. On the other hand, you know, when you have a business, any business regardless of its size, and with vacant land next to it, and it gets developed as commercial, you know, there's an inherent benefit, I mean, to both businesses, that they be interconnected, because a customer comes and parks and goes to Compton Pizza Joint next door, or maybe pulls into that nail facility, has their nail done, and wants to go pick up a pizza home, and figures, well, I've got to make a left turn on this road to go to the pizza joint to pick up a pizza from Compton's Pizza, they're going to go, well, that's too much trouble, I'm going to go home, because I can make a right turn and go home. And so by interconnecting the parking lot, it'll make them flow better. And, you know, and the initial traffic on the parking lot's not going to hurt it, it's not going to damage it.
Yeah. I understand the concept, I'm just not sure it'll work in every type of business atmosphere.
And I would think the staff could evaluate that to some degree. I mean, I think it's encouraging that that be reviewed and looked at and accommodated. Actually, "shall demonstrate the interconnectivity to all of the commercial properties," meaning adjacent, is intent to reduce traffic, so I mean, you're kind of encouraging that that be a part of your process, whether it's the actual requirement, I don't see that being required, but it's definitely something that's encouraged to be reviewed and discussed. Any other comments?
I think each new business that comes to us would have to be looked at on its own merit.
Correct.
I think you need to have some kind of escape clause on this, though. I agree with Buddy, there are some kind of businesses that just don't lend themselves to interconnectivity, and it's not only the car business, there are others. I like the idea, but I think we need to have a, some way to...
Maybe the wording needs to be changed to include...
I don't think you can list every one, because there's always going to pop up something that's not going to work.
Could it be at staff's discretion? Yeah.
Ask Julio.
No.
Putting that burden on staff becomes real problematic, because, you know, then where do they draw the line? Anything they do sets a precedent for something else, you know, it becomes very difficult to put that burden on staff. Maybe what the wording needs to say, it's instead of "all commercial parcels," well, I'm trying to think.
Could we change that to "from shall" to "should"? That gives you a little wiggle room.
What if we remove the word "all"?
Yeah, what if we remove the word "all"? Actually, why, instead of projects, why don't we just say "commercial parcels shall demonstrate", not projects? I mean, we're looking at parcels of land. And then, that way, we're not... No, it should be projects, I'm sorry, it has to be projects, you know.
Yeah, because it wouldn't be all of the, quite possibly it wouldn't be all the land.
Could you still say "should" and "shall"?
I think you still need to say "should," though.
Commercial projects should, and then that leaves it to our, to somebody's discretion to say, you need to do this.
Even ours.
Haven't we had issues in the past with "should," though? Like, didn't we change something else from "should" to "shall," because "should" doesn't really mean anything?
Correct.
Even changing it up, you can still, still, staff is going to be reviewing all this, and "should" be, and "should..."
"Shall."
Oh, I'm not going to say "shall" with staff, but "should" should give us some recommendation based on what they see, because they should, you know...
You know, let's just say, for example, that there are some scenarios, and I agree, there probably are some scenarios out there where maybe you don't need to do that. They still have the ability to go to the Board of Adjustment and say, look, we're unique, we have a hardship, this isn't going to be applicable for whatever reason, and they can get relief from that, from that requirement, because that's what the Board of Adjustment is, to identify those unique circumstances.
And you guys aren't seeing most, if all, any of the commercial projects that we're seeing, so this isn't a decision that's ever going to come back to you. You know, if we create this language that does give our department that ability to enforce something, and I'm just afraid of the word "should."
Right.
If we want to do something, it "shall" be, it shouldn't, should be.
So does that word give you the discretion to say, this is not going to work for your business, or you need to do this for your business?
I think that "shall" is mandatory, and I think that what Julio says, if their layout does not warrant or isn't capable of connecting, then yeah, you go to the Board of Adjustments, and I think that's something that we could, you know, get into our language, as staff recommends approving of this variance, because the property cannot physically connect to the property immediately adjacent, and we're just adding another step in there for this developer, but having the word "shall" allows us to require it, and you just drive up and down Airline, and how many cases would the word "shall" have helped?
That was my next question. What is the percentage that this would actually warrant versus the businesses that would have to go to the Board of Adjustments?
Well over 90.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the situation Buddy said is perfect. A car dealership, obviously, we're not going to require them to connect. I mean, and there's probably more, I can't think of them right this second, but there are probably...
One or two.
Yeah.
Okay.
A self-storage facility. That's not going to necessarily connect to the property once you're in the back part, but if there's a parking lot up front, yeah, there probably should be a stubout connecting to the next commercial property.
So my question is, let's take a self-storage facility, and the only part that he's going to concrete is a driveway to pull in there, and then the gate opens and goes in, are we now going to require him to concrete the entire front of his property to connect to another commercial business?
Maybe.
I mean, that's kind of what you're saying.
Well, he still has to meet his parking requirements.
Right, he's going to pave his parking.
So he's going to have to have some paved parking, and what we're saying is...
Yeah, but, I mean, you go to every one that's around here, they have two to three parking spots, because everybody pulls it back, so now you increasing this guy's cost of building, he's going to have to concrete the whole front of his facility.
Once again...
In order to connect to another, to another business. And that's a problem.
On a case-by-case basis, I think that the language allows us to make a recommendation to the Board of Adjustments, they don't necessarily have to connect, and on a case-by-case basis, I think that will work. I think that the minute we make it where they don't have to do it, no one's going to do it. We're going to continue to do what we're doing today. It says "should," so I'm not doing it.
But the only problem, though, is not going to create a whole lot of inconsistencies, you know, because I can see it coming, that some guy's going to have a legitimate reason, and y'all don't think it is, but he does, and, you know, he's going to sue you because you say, well, you let so-and-so do it.
Well, but that's the whole nature of the Board of Adjustment, that's exactly, you know, that's what, that's its whole purpose of existence, you know, is to hear those unique circumstances and make a judgment based on the circumstances that occur and the hardship that an individual property owner has.
And staff will make the recommendation that they need to recommend?
Correct.
Okay.
That's the way we view it, you know, they still have a mechanism out there to deal with this, should it be a problem?
But aren't you adding another financial burden on a person?
Potential.
Going to the Board of Adjustments, and there's a fee, or?
Yeah, it's $35, so not really.
Not that much money, then, okay. So do you, do we leave or take out the word "all"?
I think "all" can come out. It's, you know, "all" can come out, but "shall" should remain.
Okay, let me go ahead and open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this topic, please come forward. You'll have three minutes to speak. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing is closed. Any other discussion, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept this ordinance, but taking off the word "all."
Recommend to the parish council.
I recommend this to the parish council.
Motion to approve based on removing the word "all," and recommend moving to the parish council. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Julio Dumas. Any opposition? Motion carries. Historical site overlays. Mr. Dumas?
This was something that we recognized in the subcommittee that, you know, the originally, you know, I think intent and purpose of historic site was to protect it from surrounding impacts and what have you, and, you know, with some recent building permit activity and what have you, we recognized that, hey, you know what, this, we don't really have any regulations, you know, these things are being open to the public and what have you, but we don't have any really regulations that really regulate what's required on the property and how to protect these valuable assets, these historic facilities. And so, the whole purpose here is to recognize some of the things that they're doing, that they're currently doing in them, and secondly, to make sure that the rules and regulations apply to the property as well as to the surrounding property, and to tie in some loose ends to require parking, you know, off-parking and some landscaping and things like that on the property, rather than leaving it, you know, so discretionary. So the whole intent here is just to simply tie it all together so that it applies to the property itself, and to provide for some requirements for parking and, you know, proper ingress and egress and landscaping and things like that.
Was this brought to your attention by someone that had this...
There were a series of permits on a home that recently was acquired, and it was brought to our attention, that these things were occurring, and, you know, the question came up, that like, the ordinance only deals with the property surrounding it, not the property. I said, oops.
So someone requested this, to us to look at our ordinance and to clarify.
Right. Well, we've been, you know, we're also identifying some zoning subcommittee, some other things that we thought, you know, we needed to do that didn't, we didn't get approached it, so we took it beyond what the initial question asked.
This may be a really silly question. I just want clarification maybe for myself, but under C, on letter B, we have reception hall, meeting hall, exhibit hall. What is the difference?
I think it's nomenclature, and I think it's just the fact that, you know, some of these folks have exhibit areas where they're exhibiting things, and then they...
That'd be a museum?
Well, yeah, for lack of a better term, and then...
And you have museum listed?
Yeah, but, yeah, but then it's not really a museum, because, you know, by definition...
It's something they can exhibit for, just a temporary...
For a temporary basis, or something like that, and then, and then the reception hall and what have you, it was just, I guess, terminology that's being used, and we didn't want to use one and not use the other one and cause confusion, so we thought it better to be all-inclusive.
Clarify everything, okay.
I'd like to open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come forward and speak on this item, please come forward, and you'll have three minutes. No one wishing to come forward? Public hearing, oh. I thought you went that way and not this. Usually they come to the podium.
Hi.
My name is Lita Chalksider. The reason I came was just to see what was going to be going on with the historical site. I have three large boxes at the smokehouse that we've met with meetings and tried to do things, and this has been dormant now since May of 2005, I believe. So this was the first thing that I had seen that said "historical site overlays." I own the Dixon House on Highway 42, and it's really been a pain in the butt, if you'll excuse my expression.
Excuse.
It says that, you know, we can do anything you want to with the property when you own it. Presently, we're in the process of getting it removed from the historical site. My curiosity just got the best of me. I just had to come see what y'all were going to be doing.
But that's fine.
You know, and everything, and it's not been anything in the paper, so, you know, that's what I just told Lance, I said, I just wanted to see what was going on.
Well, I'm glad you came.
Because we had covered just about so many things, I mean, we've just, the attorney said you couldn't do one for one place without doing with the other, we've been through all the tests, we've been to a lot of meetings, okay? So I just wanted just to see, you know, what was going to be done, who was asking to be done. I saw in the paper recently where the Lusto House, which is at the end of Highway 73, it's up for sale, and I know she was one of the ladies that would come to meetings and everything, trying to fight for our rights, you know, and everything, but I'm going to sit back now, know that things are back on the order, and just kind of listen to see what's going to happen, okay?
Now, you're moving Dixon House, where are you moving it to?
I'm not moving it, I'm trying to have it removed from the historic...
From the National Register.
Also trying to take it from the National Register.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to have it removed. I've owned it now for about three or four years, and when we talked to the people in Baton Rouge, they said that it was very, how did she put that, some doubtful reasoning to add it to the register, but they did anyway. So it's deplorable, it's not been well taken care of, it's just, it's just really a mess.
Okay.
But I thank y'all for listening to me, and I'm very impressed with y'all. I have been to so many meetings and everything, and I'm just, I'm just going to tell you right now, y'all have done a beautiful job.
Thank you.
It's just, it's so even, you actually know things. You actually know things, okay?
I'm glad you think so.
You can ask Lance, I've been to a lot of them, I'm very impressed, but I really thank you for listening to me, and then I'm going to sit back and listen, okay?
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to come forward? If not, public hearing is closed.
I still have my reservations about amending this ordinance, since we already, in my opinion, have something in place which will allow these historical site property owners to develop their property. And as I was going back through some of my notes from the past, at past time, the commissioners, with the exception of our three newest commissioners, were all here, and we were all pretty happy that with a historical site, a PUD concept was being brought to us. The PUD concept at that time was new, and it gave us the latitude, as a commission, we felt we needed to actually oversee and have some controls with what was taking place with some of these developments. And now I see that we're going to go ahead and, you know, here's a proposal in front of us to amend an ordinance, and possibly down the road, something's going to happen, somebody's going to put something in, and we're going to get phone calls about it, and they're going to be able to say, well, I did what was required of me in the ordinance. Whereas with the PUD or SPUD concept, that is a contractual deal where we can negotiate with them, and we understand upfront what they're going to do. So I still don't really see the advantage at this point of revising this ordinance, when as far as, as I said before, we already have something in place to address this. And I certainly don't see the point in revising the ordinance when it's just one or two individuals
Any other comments, questions at this time? Well, the comments or questions, what is the wish of the commission?
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the amended ordinance to the parish council.
A motion by Julio Dumas to approve amended ordinance?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paige Becknow. Any opposition?
I object.
Michael Marshawn, object. Any other objections? Motion carries. Ordinance ruled. Move to the council.
I'm going to ask staff to please handle the zoning subcommittee meeting. We will meet on the last Friday of the month.
At 8:00?
At 8:00, just like we normally do, at the parish council office. And I had an emergency, and I had to run out of town, so I wasn't present, so I'll ask staff to please do the report.
Okay. I'm going to run through the agenda real quick and just talk about really what we talked about. We pulled out our zoning map revisions, and we talked specifically about three different areas. The article that was written in the paper mentioned language that isn't exactly what we're doing. The article said, "We are addressing non-conforming sites with correct zoning," and that is not what we are doing. There are three or four, maybe five, specific sites in the parish that have a non-conforming use, and we are addressing them with the correct zoning designation. One of them is per recommendation from a councilman, one of them is per recommendation of a commissioner, and one of them is per recommendation of staff that we just missed when we were going through the plan, and that's, you know, the commercial lot in front of Pelican Point, putting that in compliance with the zoning, because it's commercial now, and today it's zone residential. So we talked about that, and then what we talked about really was, what are we going to work on this year? And it's really setting some goals for the zoning subcommittee. The first of those is looking at the commercial square footage in all zoning categories. Today, our ordinance allows 1,500 square feet, pretty much wherever you want to put it, there's use guidelines, and the discussion was had as to whether or not that was the intent of the code, to allow somebody to build their business at the front of a neighborhood, or was the intent to allow people to do home-based businesses and things of that sort. So we're going to look at that over the next couple of months. The next thing is the landscape ordinance. I started working on my scope of services so that I can go out and find somebody to help me finalize this ordinance. We're going to work on putting in some stormwater management criteria in there, we're going to work on doing some urban canopy stuff, possibly even requiring tree surveys on properties that have trees larger than a particular diameter. Once again, we're going to take that out to the public, once we get this ball rolling, and take their temperature. I can tell you right now, the temperature is going to be really cold, but we're going to have to work on this one, because I think it's important. The next item was PUD, SPUD, ordinance changes. I think that what you'll find is we've got an ordinance that was drafted, and I think it's time that we look at it, especially now during a slow time, and figure out if there's a better way for it to be reworked. You know, there's measurable standards that you can look at, park space versus open space isn't specifically addressed in our ordinance, and I think that we could look at that and some other traffic and drainage specifics. And another thing that I like in some PUD ordinances that I've worked with is flexibility. Our PUD ordinance doesn't allow a lot of flexibility, and I think that developers in the future that come to us with a SPUD, if our PUD is more flexible in allowing them what they can do, we're likely to get better results on the back end. Lastly, Patrice is going to distribute to the commissioners that weren't at the meeting. We talked about our commission bylaws and the processes and procedures that we follow, and the fact that we've got a lot of holes in our policies and procedures, and one of the tasks that the zoning subcommittee is going to do is to take the policy and procedures and reanalyze them and put them into a format that we can adopt for standards. And part of our existing bylaws state, if something is not addressed in the bylaws, then we refer to Robert's Rules. And so she's also going to hand out a copy of Robert's Rules for you all, and it's really just a reference material. We have no intention of adhering to the 9,000-page document that is Robert's Rules, but we think that if we could adopt pieces and parts to help the commission run a little smoother, then that would be a good goal to set. The last thing I want to talk about is we've scheduled the town hall meetings for the zoning map changes, and I'm going to run through that real quick, but right now, those are listed on the website. But right now, those are listed on the website, they are listed on Channel 21, and it's being advertised in our local newspaper. Monday, March 23rd, we're going to meet in the Lemon Center for District 1 at 9:00 a.m. On Tuesday, March 24th, at 9:00 a.m., we're going to meet at Santa Mont Park in District 6. Wednesday, March 25th, at 9:00 a.m., we're going to meet in the Darrow Community Center for District 3, and at 2:00, we're going to meet in the Sorento Civic Center for District 2. On Monday, March 30th, we're going to meet at 9:00 a.m. in the Oak Grove Community Center on Districts 4 and 7, and at 2:00, we're going to meet at the DPW Building on Church Point for Districts 9 and 10. On Tuesday, March 31st, we're going to meet at 9:00 a.m. at the Geismar Community Center in District 8, and at 2:00 at the Galvez Library for Districts 5 and 11. When those meetings have ended, we're going to craft a synopsis report, we're going to revise the map where it needs to be revised, and we're going to bring it back to you guys for the April meeting. I'll give my presentation that I was going to give tonight then, with the recommendations from the public and the recommendations that we've received from fellow commissioners and councilmen. Hopefully, with the recommendation from you guys, we'll move it to the council and move on from there.
Ricky, I've got one question. I know Patrice was taking minutes at our Sony Subcommittee, are we going to start having those with the reports? Or can we?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Because I'm not going to be here at the end of this month.
I guess a question I have, looking at these meetings, they all during working hours. What kind of turnout do you think we'll have from people?
Have you seen the unemployment rate?
Yeah, we're very fortunate to live where we are. But when they had the Baton Rouge Loop meetings, and they had them in Ascension Parish, they had them in Livingston Parish in Baton Rouge, they had them at night, so you could have people to turn out. I mean, people that are working, and we do have some unemployment, can have a hard time telling their boss that they need to take off to go to the zoning meeting. So I think y'all might want to reconsider the time, but... I know it's convenient for y'all, but I don't think it's convenient for the public.
Well, and I know the public will come, have an opportunity to come here and hear it, and also probably go to council eventually, I know, and then they'll also probably go to strategic planning. So there'll be about three opportunities if they don't get a chance to see, plus it's on the webpage, too, I know, it'll be published there, so there are other opportunities after hours to do it.
I just don't think you'll have a good turnout.
And you may be right. I think we're just trying to get this thing through the process and addressed so that it can come here, and then we can move forward with it. You know, and just the general feedback that we've been seeing, it's not controversial at all. I think it's something that should have been done and looked at, and everybody's...
Well, no, I mean, I understand.
Very supportive of it.
And I think everybody's going to be supportive of it, but I don't think the general public is going to have the opportunity.
Well, like I said, they'll have the opportunity, I know, here in council, and also probably at strategic planning.
Point on the...
But, I mean, it is a good point.
Well, the point I'd like to raise pertained to the bylaws. When the bylaws were first created, it was a joint effort between the subdivision ordinance committee and the zoning Subcommittee. And I think it'd be best to keep it that way, rather than have one Subcommittee work on it. It should be a combination.
I agree.
Okay, we don't need a public hearing, because that's just a committee report.
Yeah, that's just a committee report.
Yeah. Now, you want to add something to it as far as the...
No.
Anything else, Ricky? Does that conclude your report? All right.
Thanks, Chair.
Nothing else?
Move.
We are adjourned.